Great. So I'm wondering if we could get started slowly, just because we want to maximize our time. Everything, everyone okay with that? And then Maya will join us as soon as she can get online. So I'm going to call this work session of the Eugene School 4J School Board to order. And tonight, we will be beginning, having a meeting with our search firm Alma Advisory Group. And getting taking our first steps to get going on our superintendent search. All board members are present. We are our virtual tonight. And I'm going to just introduce our three consultants from Alma and then turn it over to them. So first, I have Kathleen Schiverdecker up here on the screen and Monica Rosen and Sylvia Flowers. So welcome and I'm going to turn the time to you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to get us started here and share my screen. I have a presentation. We have a very ambitious agenda for the next few hours. So we're going to try to move very quickly through the first part of our time. Because the heart of our conversation is really in the second half. So wanted to introduce ourselves a little bit more now that everything is official. Planning to give you a quick overview of the search process and timeline. And give the group a chance to ask any questions that you have there. And then Sylvia is going to lead us through a conversation. She was able to have one-on-one conversations with every board member. So she's going to share what she heard, what the themes were. As a way to help us have a conversation about the responsibilities and the competencies required of the role. And then our next big discussion Kathleen will lead us through. And it's around planning for community engagement. So a lot to get through, but we'll try to move as quickly as we can. So first, we'll, we'll just do a quick round of introductions again. I'm the founder and CEO of Alma, almost five years old now. We've been working with school systems all over the country and everything Alma does is around talent. How do you attract great talent? How do you build recruitment and hiring systems that mitigate bias? And that help organizations make great decisions? And how do you create the conditions where people can really do their best work? So that's, that's what we've been doing. Very excited about it. Our executive search is a newer, relatively newer part of our work. We've been doing search for about three years now. And really just took all of our best practice and the things we had been working with our clients to develop. And applied it to executive search and have had great results. Both in terms of diversity of hires and in terms of community engagement in the process. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. I'll turn it over to Sylvia next and then Kathleen third. Go ahead Sylvia.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you again. I'm Sylvia Flowers and I am based in Nashville, Tennessee. And over my 17 years in education, I've been in three different states, Delaware, Illinois, and now Tennessee. And have been focused really on the, in the talent space, both teacher and leader effectiveness, human capital, teacher recruitment, retention and recognition. As well as educator compensation. So thrilled to join you all tonight and to get started.
And Sylvia is going to be playing a leading role in this search. She'll be working very closely with you all through every stage of the process. We have a whole support team that you won't get to meet necessarily, but that are out, will be out there sourcing candidates, communicating with candidates as we get through the process. Researching, you know, the best places to find candidates. So Sylvia is going to be a key person, really getting us through the search process from beginning to end. Kathleen.
I am so delighted to be here and it's so great to see everyone again. And I am also excited to be nestled into a bit more of a backstage opportunity in the search process. My focus tends to be a little bit more on some of the product development, including the job description, based on all the important feedback that you've provided. And as Monica mentioned, we will talk more in detail about the essential, the central component of community engagement and stakeholder feedback in this process. So I have been in the field of education. I came up through a little bit more traditional pathway. As a school leader and district leader, providing support and coaching to principals and now support and coaching to leaders all the way up to the superintendent and board level. So we feel like we've had the great opportunity through Alma and our collaborative experiences beyond the boundaries of this organization to just get a deep understanding of what's required of this role. So we are excited to learn more about what matters most in your community. I will say on a personal note, I've got deep ties to the Oregon community with a lot of family that comes from the Corvallis area. And still, still a really close family connection in Philomath, Oregon. And so I spend a lot of time there. I've got family that's worked in Eugene. So I'm very, very honored and excited to be a part of this process. So just happy to be here tonight and we'll connect with you again soon to talk more about stakeholder engagement.
Thanks Kathleen. As Kathleen mentioned, she leads a lot of our content development, our interview guides, our job description and a number of things. But she also will assist in facilitating the community engagement stakeholder conversations. So you'll get to hear a little bit more about that as well. Okay. Oh, and I also am, you know, very supportive around in particular, the, the community engagement and communication strategy. As well as helping to facilitate the, your debrief as you eventually will get to meet with candidates. To ensure that we stay focused on managing bias throughout the process. So you'll be seeing a lot of the three of us. So I want to give you a quick overview of the search process. But first, wanted to actually have a conversation about our shared purpose. And so I've got these two statements up here. I want to give you all a chance to read them. And then I'm going to ask the group to make any edits that you would like. To make sure this truly reflects what the board wants to accomplish. Is that Mary raising your hand?
Yes. I just might suggest that you refer to it as the 4J Eugene Community rather than just Eugene Community. There's two school districts in Eugene. That's all.
Perfect.
And you, and then 4J is bigger than Eugene itself. So.
I see.
Well, it's more inclusive to me. Thank you.
Yeah. Should I put the 4J up front here as well?
We're, I mean technically Eugene School District 4J. So the other way for the top one, and then maybe for the bottom one, even just removing Eugene and just have it say 4J Community. If we're getting into the nitty gritty.
Perfect. Any other thoughts? I'm curious. Oh, go ahead Maya.
I was just going to say, I, I just want to stop and appreciate that last part that we continue to emphasize in this process that bias will be mitigated every step of the way. I, I think that's a really important component to the part right above where you talk about transparent. I think that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you for that. I was actually going to ask if there are particular phrases or words that strike you as being especially important. Along the lines of what Maya shared.
Well, I think a transparent search process would be one of the phrase that would come out to me.
Yeah. Any other comments? Okay, great. So this is something that we'll keep coming back to. You know, we want to explain to the community exactly what our goal is and what our purpose is. And these are the things we try to stay true to every step of the way. So I wanted to give you all a chance to look at our expected timeframe here. You know, this is a dynamic process and it may change. But our thought is actually that we begin planning for stakeholder input in December. We actually, I'm actually realizing we probably will have the heart of our stakeholder input in January because it's too late in December to give enough notice with the holidays before us. Although there are certain meetings that we, we've already begun with board members and there are certain meetings we can have in December. January is primarily going to be the time for us to actually meet with stakeholders and hear what they have to say. So we're hoping today to talk a little bit more about that. Kathleen will lead us through that conversation. And our hope is to see if we can set some tentative dates as soon as possible. So that we can begin communicating about when people will have the opportunity to engage. Our plan and hope is that we can actually get a job posting out sooner rather than later. And the main reason is we want to be able to advertise over the holiday break when sometimes people are at home and start looking around for opportunities for the coming school year. So we'll have the posting advertised hopefully by December 17th. And our goal then would be spending December through January really out there posting, building up interest for the role and building an applicant pool for you. The goal is to have candidates identified, you know, by the end of January going into February. We will have further discussions around the steps of the screening process. But we know that all interviews will be performance and competency based. Kathleen is going to explain more about that in just a moment. And then eventually we will have a finalist round, which we expect. We expect there to be several rounds, two, two to three rounds. Leading up to the finalist round. And ideally, the finalist round will include opportunity for the broader community to engage with your finalists. So our hope is that by March, you will have a selected candidate and an accepted offer hopefully. And that you'll be able to work on finalizing induction plans. Because our hope is that you take the information from, from the screening process to actually inform the kind of supports you want to have ready to receive your, to receive your, your next superintendent. So let me pause there and see if you have any questions about the timeline or this general steps of the process. Mary?
I guess a little bit of clarity from you would be helpful. You said December 17th, you want to have the posting finished so you can use it over the holiday break, correct?
Yes.
And then the stakeholder input will be before that or?
Yes.
Currently it's. I just know there are a lot of people who want to, you know, give their, their two cents or probably five cents now with inflation on this posting. So.
Absolutely. Yes.
A concern.
Absolutely. And that's a great question. You know, it's a little bit of a race against time and we've had to do this in the past as well. What we want to do is to be able to do both things in parallel, actually. And so we'll talk in a moment about how the community engagement will continue to help us refine the job posting and the job profile and how we use it in the screening process. But we're going to be leveraging the board's insight first, which we're going to share today. To be able to at least get something out there that people can see and know about. We just, you know, our, our recommendation is to do that. And knowing that we need to give people enough notice to engage in community conversations. And we want to honor that process as well. But we won't be able likely to do that until probably the second or even third week of January. So, you know, we'll talk more about that process and how then we integrate that feedback, which we absolutely will into the process. Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm wondering, and none of us are able to read the future in this moment. But I'm wondering how much of this you're thinking will be virtual and how much you're thinking will be in person? Or when you think in person might happen if the pandemic cooperates with us for once in two years?
Yeah. What we're seeing lately is most people are keeping much of their processes virtual. So a lot of the early stage interviews are still happening, happening virtually. If you have a semifinalist interview with maybe five or six candidates, we would probably recommend doing those virtually. The decision point will be at the finalist stage. Whether you want to have people come in person at the finalist stage or not, whether you feel ready for that. And so far, we haven't had people bring their finalists in. They've continued to do the finalist stage virtually. But, but then have their, their selected person come in and once they've been selected. So that'll be a decision for the group to make. But I would expect either at the finalist stage or once you have your person to have them come and visit at that point. Yeah. All right. So I'm sharing a little bit about where we are and where we're headed. We are hoping to, you know, especially tonight, really get your guidance related to community engagement. We've begun gathering input in particular with board members. And we are working on drafting the position description for, for your review. The things that we're developing next, we're hoping to build a community survey to hold community meetings and focus groups and to begin recruiting candidates for the role. So we'll be able to come back to this forum to be able to share our progress as we go. So I'm going to turn it over to Kathleen to talk to us a little bit about how our process mitigates bias, going back to, I think it was Maya's point earlier. So Kathleen, share with us of what we see as the key steps to mitigating bias.
Yeah, I'm happy to do so. And thank you so much for the call out of this truly. This is a hallmark aspect of our process and something that we care so deeply about. And it all begins with the lifeblood of the process, which is getting community and stakeholder input. And so as Monica mentioned, we definitely do not want to hamstring or, or slow down the timeline for any of our processes. So we, we make sure that we are continuing to engage the community and seek feedback throughout the process. Not only for the job description and the competencies, I'll talk more about that in a second. But also as stakeholder input influences the interview experiences for candidates. So we care incredibly deeply about this part of the process. And you'll hear me talk sometimes as we get to know each other a little bit better about sort of the, the audience view and the backstage view. And so the audience view is the three of us, along with the team, have had incredible generous opportunities to be practitioners in the field of human resources and education, support roles and leadership roles. And behind the scenes, we are researchers at heart. And so researching processes and people and finding ways to create equity minded, racially conscious minded processes to, to energize and support and, and really create conditions for candidates to thrive across the board is, is something that matters deeply to us in this process. That begins with talking to people about what matters most in this role. So we've had the chance to support multiple searches at this level before. And as I mentioned at the top of this call, to really work closely with superintendents and boards and, and understand in UG context, what matters. What we care about is what matters in the 4J, in the 4J community. So Sylvia has had the opportunity to connect with board members to get their feedback about the role. We want to hear from staff and from students and from parents and from key stakeholders in your community. What matters to them as attributes and responsibilities in this role? And so the word authentically is critical to us at this point as well. And what that will feel like, sometimes it's radically uncomfortable, these conversations. And I hope that Monica is smiling right now as we think about some of the, you know, some of the experiences we've had asking really tough questions and really intentionally rigorous and engaging questions of community about what matters and what they've experienced in engaging with the superintendent. So we do not shrink back in any way from keeping it real in those conversations with, with people. On a brief aside, I will say that one of the experiences that we've had in recent search opportunities is working directly with the student groups. And we care tremendously about student voice. Each of us has had experience working directly with students. I'm biased towards students as a, as a former principal and, and various other roles that are working directly with students. But we want to know from literally the classroom up, what's happening in terms of people's interactions with the superintendent? And we feel that that is the first step in mitigating bias in our process is hearing directly from people experiencing the superintendent's leadership, what it is that they need. And so another aspect of community engagement that we care a lot about is figuring out with your input, who are the groups that may be traditionally or historically marginalized in the community? Who doesn't get asked to have a seat at the table or a voice in the room? And we've gotten feedback in our previous searches about how much that has mattered. That we have created survey opportunities, virtual opportunities. Most recently, some in-person opportunities for stakeholders to come together and provide feedback about what really counts for this role. And as Monica mentioned just a moment ago, it's not just at the beginning of the process. And we know that we've got, as she said, a very ambitious timeline for creating a role description. With that said, we will continue to, to update that and make sure that that is reflective of stakeholder feedback that we have. But we want people to be able to provide input literally up until the very, very last stages of the process through surveys and hopefully some online engagements through websites and, and other portals where people can provide feedback. So a key aspect of community engagement is taking the feedback and using it to really craft a vibrant and inviting job description. That we are committed to making sure that candidates that we know would be or suspect would be a great fit for this role will see themselves reflected in the story that we tell about 4J. And how we describe what the work is, what the, what the important aspects of the community are, what they hold dear, what they want to champion and protect that's been working and things that they know that they will need to come in and lead through. We believe in telling the truth to candidates about what role it is that they're taking. And that all comes from this team and other stakeholder input. So we take care of our candidates just as we take care of our clients. And we want to make sure that we are just being incredibly transparent and authentic with them about what the feedback has been. And so even though we know that the, the job description is going to be posted soon, there will still be room for people to continue to provide feedback to that. And we make that clear with every stakeholder group as we're, as we're inviting them into those experiences. And so what competency based interviewing means and requires is that once we define the responsibilities for the role, which for a superintendent tend to be pretty clear, it goes way beyond just the professional responsibilities. It gets into the affect that, and the, the attributes and the characteristics that candidates will bring to the interview experience and to the, the leadership experience. And so that's where we really need your feedback about what it is that, that you believe in your experience matters most in this role. What people are going to need to bring in terms of their professional experience, their, their personal narrative, where they are in their leadership journey and how you think that aligns to the work that it is that you've defined that you want to do. And so that's where the competencies come in. Some examples of competencies that we've defined in the past are guardian of trust, champion of diversity, equity and inclusion. And we've drilled much more deeply into that particular competency in the past several searches that we've done. And we really depend on stakeholder input to define what those competencies are. So you'll find in the job description, when that is completed in draft form for your review, the professional responsibilities and the competencies that candidates will really need to bring to thrive in the role. And so the interview process is really designed certainly to get that, you know, in our screening process upfront, we spend a lot of time looking at a candidate's professional history. So as Monica mentioned, we do a deep dive into people's backgrounds. We have an understanding of where they're coming from and what they're bringing and what their leadership experiences have been. If this is a role where it would be a first time superintendency or someone who's coming with all kinds of different district leadership backgrounds that might align with what you've defined as being most important. We look at all of that upfront and then as candidates get further into the process, it becomes all about their ability to demonstrate evidence of the competencies. And so we design questions that are based on both behavioral or leadership tendencies and then also those professional experiences that are not just what would you do in a particular context? But what have you done and what evidences of your success? Or what evidence exists of your success in a, in a similar type of experience? So that's where we, we focus on the mitigation of bias in that we create conditions in the interview experience for candidates to really demonstrate their historical demonstration of a competency and of a professional responsibility that we've defined together with your input and with stakeholder input. And so finally, the, the process for candidates and, you know, we are, we are both compassionate with candidates and we are tough on candidates. We want them to be successful, but we also create a process, again with your input, that allows them the opportunity to engage with multiple stakeholders. It begins with our screening of them. And then typically the second round will involve members of your team. And then, then it gets really, really exciting. Exciting is one way to put it. It gets exciting for the candidates because then they have the opportunity to, to engage in a performance task and engage in round, multiple rounds with board members where they have several opportunities. And again, I want to be clear about the fact this is a collaborative input process. So we'll depend on your ideas and your best thinking about what it is that you need to see and want to see from candidates. But they will have the chance to show in different ways, different, you know, sort of categories of leadership, what their strengths are. And, and you'll have the chance to debrief together about what you have noticed about candidates. Something that you'll hear Monica talk more about is really, this has been such a. really, this has been such a a key learning experience for me from an HR practitioner's perspective, and that is the opportunity for the board and anyone participating in the interview to go through an anti-bias training opportunity. And that'll be something that you'll you'll hear a little bit more about. But we care a lot about again, just opening up the the floor, creating space for interviewers to talk about their biases as they step into the interview process. And that is something that we've gotten really incredible feedback around being a key aspect of our work with interview teams. And that is just the invitation to talk about the biases that we all come into the interview process with. So that's another another part that you will experience in this process. And then finally, once candidates have worked their way through the process and they've gotten, you know, feedback and and supportive feedback from the team and from us, then there will be the opportunity for the group to debrief as a whole and not only name their biases and reflect on those, but talk about the evidence that candidates have revealed related to the competencies. And so this, this will never be a sort of a visceral response to candidates. That's not named ahead of time. This will be an opportunity for us to keep ourselves accountable under hopefully some very sage leadership from this team around focusing on evidence of demonstration of competency as candidates work their way through the process. So those are some really specific steps that we take throughout the interview process for for candidates, beginning at the paper screen, at the very beginning, all the way until the finalist interviews. So this will become the the competency aspect is just so incredibly like it emerges as being so incredibly important through through the process. And so what this will allow you to do as board members is first of all, and I Monica and Sylvia will will also smile at this, I have such a predilection for the the role description. And the reason for that is because getting super clear about what matters most to a community. Not only the the knowledge and skills, but just the the background that the person brings and the the just the 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 attributes and characteristics and affect that they bring to the work is incredibly important. And so when we figure out what the competencies are, that'll that is sort of a lens, the competencies become a lens through which we can look for these other things. And then once we are clear on the job description, that becomes the language that we use to talk about the role and to promote the role. And we will invite each of you to be our strongest advocates for promoting the role to people that you would love to see apply to the process. And so something again that we just hold so dear. And as a matter of fact, it's a non-negotiable. We are, we are 100% committed to just an equitable and inclusive process as we are screening candidates into the various rounds that we have. And so again, that's something that you'll hear us talk about often is just consistently driving back to what competencies have candidates demonstrated that align with what it is that stakeholders have deemed to be the most important. And so in the interview processes, when we are debriefing, when we are working together to interview candidates and especially in those those moments, there's always this. I think of it as a synapse almost. So we'll be in a a shared conversation, an interview with the candidate. And then there's this, there's this quiet moment after the end of the interview where you're just like all these thoughts about the the demonstration of competencies are rushing at you. And then that's when that's when the conversation gets real. And you'll hear us very purposefully, very compassionately, very intentionally driving every person participating in the interview process back to what has been the demonstration of competencies based on, based on evidence of experience and in other other attributes that the candidate is able to to apply. And then finally, we utilize all of that information as we plan for the onboarding of the candidate in induction into the system. And so this is, this process is different simply because it is incredibly collaborative, collaborative. It is based on competencies that we identify together. The the candidates as they advance through their process have multiple opportunities to demonstrate evidence of competencies. And then we work together to define how it is that we are going to seek evidence of those competencies. And so as I mentioned, just a moment ago, this this isn't a sort of a, oh, I feel like this candidate would be a great fit. You know, there's, there's, there's not that conversation. This is more a conversation about the candidate demonstrated evidence of these competencies. Consequently, they're going to advance in the process. So we are very much looking forward to engaging with you in these steps of the process.
Any questions about that before we move on? Mary?
This is more, I guess, a general question. At what point? Or what's the confidentiality of the process? At what point do people know that they're being considered? Or what point does the public know? I guess that's what I'm trying to ask.
Yeah. So some of that we're going to need to explore what is, what is in the state law in terms of what is public information or not? The reality is to attract the top candidates for the role. You know, it's really important to candidates that their names remain confidential as long as possible. Typically, by the time you get to the finalist stage, candidates are aware that their names are likely to be shared at the finalist stage. But what that gives them time, well, you know, they are likely to be gainfully employed and in high level leadership roles in their own organizations. So we really try to keep the process as confidential as we can until they until the finalist stage. I saw Gordon and then Judy.
Thanks. I have a somewhat related question. I also assume that things are going to be confidential until we get down to the to the real last finalists. We I've only been involved in one search at the school board, which was the search we did for interim superintendent a year and a half ago. And in that one, we wanted to have some some stakeholder input while still retaining confidentiality. And what we ended up was having a couple of meetings from with representative, not the whole group, but like a representative stakeholder groups that I know included the staff unions. I'm not sure if it also included a community organization who were who kind of functioned as a who provided some their input, but on a completely confidential basis. And so I wonder if you've done things like that, or if you're thinking of something like that as, let's say that you know, the state, the winnowing stage before we get to the finalist to have some way of of some outside input without compromising confidentiality.
So we have done that in the past, and it's just about who you would select to participate in that stage of the process. We would tip, we would typically see that more in the semifinalist stage. So you've gotten down to your top five or six and you're narrowing to your top two to three. And like you said, they would be smaller intimate, maybe roundtable type discussions with the candidates with agreement from the participants to to keep, to keep those comfort conversations confidential. That's certainly an option. Yeah. Judy?
The this box up here about the interviewer creates rubric to identify specifics. I like that. Do we have one rubric that we create together that we all apply? Is that?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
That's correct. Yes. So we we base it on the competencies in the job profile and then we we will all agree on what that rubric should be and how we'll know it when we see it. What we're looking for in specific interview questions all along the way. Mary?
Thank you. Gordon's question raised another question in my mind. In the past, when we've done these superintendent search processes, there were say maybe, you know, 30 applicants total. And then one year, one time, there was a community group that was doing some screening of them. And then I think another time it was the actual recruitment firm. So that what we got as a board were like a five to six semifinalists. And then we worked with that smaller group and then we narrowed it down to maybe two or three. So is that what you're thinking about again? You know, assuming we have this large group and then a smaller group and a smaller group and would you make that that kind of initial cut? Or would you want us to to be involved or just some of your thoughts about that? Thanks, Gordon, for.
Yeah, so that's that's a decision point for the board. We'll have time to talk about the screening process itself. In the past, we've, we've done it a couple, a couple of different ways. So one way is so typically Alma will do the first round because there's so many applicants to screen through. What we've done with boards in the past is we've narrowed it to the top 12 to 16 and had a second round interview with board members kind of teaming up. So everyone doesn't have to interview 16 people. And then from there, the board has selected their semifinalists, which are five to six, which then get narrowed to three. The other way that we've done it is the board has asked us to do what you just described, Mary, to have us narrow the pool to six to 10 and and allow them to interview those six to 10 before choosing their finalists. So it's, it really depends on the availability of the board and how much you want to engage with the candidates. All right. So I'm going to turn it over to Sylvia, who's going to share a little bit more about what she learned in her conversations with each of you.
Great. Thank you. So again, I just want to say thank you to each of you for jumping in and making time for conversations over the last feels like three days, maybe four. And thank you to Lisa too, for helping us to get all of these scheduled really quickly. And so hot off the press, I think my my last call was maybe four hours ago. So hot off the press are just some really high level themes that I heard over the last couple of days. And I will just preface this by saying this is a a a brief summary and certainly not exhaustive of the hours that we spent together over the last few days. But you know, I just wanted to highlight three three main things that I heard across all of my conversations. And the first being that the board is just made up of a tremendous amount of experience and leaders within the community who are so well connected and have just a steadfast and steadfast focus on student success. Second, I heard a lot about the importance of inclusion and lifting up the voices of the community. And this just resonated as a shared priority for the board members. And then lastly, rebuilding trust and the governance work is top of mind for the board members as you all continue to grow and get stronger. We started our conversations really talking about the strengths of the four J community and some of the great things and the great work that you all have been a part of over over your history. And so I'm going to let you all read through these first. And I think I have two, two quick slides about the strengths, but you know, one thing that came across really really loud and clear was the dedication that the community has for the district and for education. And that is the financial commitment where many of you noted that people show up. They show their support by supporting your referendums, your operating levities and your bond referendums. And through that commitment, the district has worked really hard to be good financial stewards of their resources as evidenced by, you know, the improvements that you're doing with facilities and even now having two new elementary schools underway and a new high school. And the other thing that almost every, every single one of you said that we have great teachers. We have strong staff members, brilliant and dedicated teachers and administrators. Again, who care so much about the work. There were some very specific programs that were highlighted in these conversations. We talked about the language immersion schools and the history of school choice in your community and some of the evidence of success by some of the leadership that you all show statewide in the number of students that graduate with a bilingual or bilingual literate certificate that shows that they're prepared to go on and continue their, their, their their education with this this accomplishment. Several members noted the work that the district did during the pandemic to support students and families by continuing services such as meal distribution and other things. And and really, again, it just shows to the care and compassion that the staff and community just pitched in and wanted to make sure that that children and families were cared for during this time. Many people talked about the focus and the work that's underway to improve student belonging, making students feel safe and supporting the mental health of students. I think there were some conversations about the work that you all have begun to remove SROs from your schools, the development of a suicide prevention position in the district and just some of the great things that are underway. And that goes right along with the work that you're doing to rethink student discipline and how you manage behavior issues in schools. The last thing I wanted to share was many people talked about the proactive work that the district has done around curriculum and has really been a leader with some of their programming around, and I want to learn more about this, the natives program. The adoption of the ethnic studies standards, some of the environmental work and taking advantage of the beauty of Oregon and all of the natural resources, the development of the and approval of the Holocaust education in the curriculum standard. So it it feels like the 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 voices of the community are recognized and that work is being embedded in the curriculum. Any thoughts? All right, I'll move, move quickly to the next two slides. In terms of the opportunities to improve, I definitely want to preface this by saying that this is work that is ongoing and work that many of you felt needed to be a continued focus for the organization. So graduation rates was mentioned multiple times and ensuring students are prepared for life after high, high school and specifically focusing on students of color, native students, migrant students and English learners in the community. Going further and faster on your work on equity and anti racism and justice, providing training to staff, being having consistent and embedded use of of the equity tool that you've developed. Rebuilding trusts and reinvigorating staff morale. We know we're all coming off of a very difficult time. We're still in it in some senses. And so continuing to rebuild the trust in the community and and among staff members. And so continuing to um rebuild the trust in the community and and among staff members. The other thing that was um talked about was making the district the premier place to work. And I think that's tied with the bullet around improving retention and recruitment and increasing the diversity of the workforce. All of this just goes to, you know, the the focus on culture and work uh in the workplace. And then continuing the focus and again mentioning that was a strength, work that's been started, but wanting to continue and go farther with the focus on mental health counseling and social work for students and uh the mental health and well being of staff. Along the lines of preparation um after high school, um several uh board members mentioned uh building out the career and technical education program and continuing to work on that. Um it uh also working on the work uh for students with disabilities and uh building out the inclusion programs that are underway now. Um and thinking about new ways and more creative ways to embed project based learning throughout um your schools and throughout uh the curriculum. And then uh in terms of um literacy, continuing the focus on third grade literacy, expanding uh pre K and preschool opportunities as well.
I'd love to just pause here and see, do you think we captured all of the opportunities to improve? Is there anything that's missing from the list?
Is there um the communication aspect embedded in this?
Tell us more, Laurel.
Well. Okay, our communication um either internally and externally, that's part of actually our goals this year as a board to create a communication policy because we don't have one. So somebody who has done some of that work is exciting for me and I'd love to hear what my other board members think.
Go ahead, Gordon.
I guess to me, the um communication relates to, I think on the previous slide, there was something about rebuilding trust, which was both and I that was both a. I know it says and reinvigorating staff morale. I guess I thought the trust was al- also meant with community and kind of externally as well as internally and communications. It's not the whole thing, but seems like it's part of that um that mission to me.
That's great. Any other comments? Yeah, Maya.
Yeah, um I I think we often hear from the community um a call for more transparency and less opacity. And um so I I I think I would also appreciate that being included in the in the list here.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that. All right, Sylvia, do you want to move on to the superintendent responsibilities?
Yes, um so this next slide is just the beginnings of the what, the what the superintendent responsibilities um might look like and how you might see this um beginning to play out as we draft the job description. So I'll let you read uh this first. And I think to some of the those comments and additions, the transparency shows up in 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 these bullets a little bit more, the listening. I think the two way communication probably will be embedded in here as well. So I captured building just and liberatory systems to ensure students are prepared for life after high school. Establishing the vision and mission for aligned academic and non academic programming for the district. Setting the tone, managing the team, helping prioritize and problem solve and holding the team accountable. Building a positive work environment and culture. Welcoming and listening to the community as partners. Stewarding the resources, both financial and human, with care, consideration and transparency. Promoting innovation in the classrooms and supporting a diverse set of schools and advocating for the district and the community. And this was referenced kind of between the state and and others, being an advocate for the district for students and families in the four J community.
Yes, Gordon.
I mean, maybe this is redundant because it was on some of the other lists. But to me, the issue of um improving staff morale, by which, I mean, not just like for the sake of people feeling better, but I feel like the the single biggest free resource that we have that we potentially have is the extent to which staff have initiative and energy and creativity. And you know, like any workplace, people can have those things or they can be kind of like shut down or alienated and not really contribute those things. And of all, you know, where we don't have enough money of all the things that we could have, that's one of the things we could, to me, the most critical thing that doesn't cost money. And that's obviously not just the superintendent, but something that seems to me the superintendent has to to lead on and setting a tone to create the kinds of partnerships that could bring that forth. So I don't know the right words, but.
Maya? Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, Judy and Laurel were before me, I think, but um so.
Go ahead, Judy.
Um I I think I'd feel better if you added, because I wasn't sure what advocating for the district and the community at a state and federal at another level is that. I I would think it would be good to finish that phrase. I assume at a state level or in po- in other policies, I don't know. I didn't.
Yeah, it was referenced uh relative to state.
Okay, great.
Is how it came came out, whether it's state mandates, state.
Good, okay.
Policy mandates.
Yeah, I like love that. And uh building just and uh liberatory. Now, I've heard that word, but that seems a little redundant with just. So I guess I want to know what that actually means in that context. I always think of them as a social justice, justice, a a just environment. So building just and I didn't know, it just sounded like either it was redundant. I just wasn't sure what that was saying.
A- any board members want to clarify liberatory or how, yeah, Martina?
Um I'm I I'm sure that others use this this language as well as me. So um I can only speak to the way that I use it, but and and would love to hear from others. When I use that term, I really think about particularly in educational spaces that education has historically been sort of talked about and thought of as a tool for liberation, as a tool for like helping people to build and grow into um a more just world. And it also has not actually been that historically in the United States. Um that's how it has been talked about, right? Like education is the road to democracy, education is the great equalizer. And those things have not been true because education has historically often been um uh, you know, a a function of oppression, right? And so a building a liberatory system really means thinking about um ways that we can actually use this system to liberate and to dismantle systems that are oppressive. That's how that's how I think about it when I use it. So to me, that does feel different from just calling out justice um because it's it's forward thinking and it's thinking about um transformation. But I'm super curious to hear if others use that differently.
Maya, were you going to respond to that or is your hand no? Anyone else?
Yeah.
Anyone else wants to comment or respond uh to Martina? Feel free to take yourself off mute and jump in.
Well, I I didn't put that word out there and um but but I I mean, part of why I came to the board is that I really want to see us training kids to be prepared to take care of themselves, not just we really focus on kids that are going to college. But I wanted to be more equitable in the sense that we're focusing equally on those kids that are going to be, you know, either going on with tech training or having enough or starting it early enough that they actually have some kind of certificate when they get out and they're ready to um pay some bills and because they'll be there as we all know, once you, once you're out on your own. So I that's how I see liberatory is being able to live.
Liberate.
Yeah, yeah, gee. And free from the some of the the things that go on that make you hold you under um just hold you under, I guess I'd say. I.
That's sorry, Laurel. I was just gonna add to that, like um contributing to breaking down the myth of the only path forward being for your college and and um and and focusing an education system with that being the 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 path to success. That also falls into the CTE, it was noted.
Yeah, I didn't know if you all had a phrase for it, for that's why I just keep saying life after high school. I don't know if you all have a programmatic focus there. So if that's not the right language that you all use, is it college and career or any post secondary? You know.
I I think I think life after high school is a nice friendly way to say exactly what we're saying. But we do use college and uh career technical education, but.
I am Maya, I think you were next, and then Laurel's hand is first.
So I would like to see, um I think it's embedded in these things, but I would really love to see like explicitly stated the um the responsibility of the superintendent to create a district culture that um that promotes the retention of our of our staff. Um and not just, I know we're in a moment where everywhere staff is fluctuating, shall we say. Um but on a long term basis, we we have had um a difficulty in in retaining our staff from um just to use a term broadly protected classes. So whether it's black and indigenous and people of color or whether it's um, you know, our LGBTQ plus staff, it's it's a it's a it's a problem for our district. And I would love to see retention be a focused so that we can have the flip side of recruitment be more and more successful.
That was exactly what I was going to say, except Maya said it better.
Martina?
Um I think these are, these are great responsibilities. Um and I'm really appreciative of all the language that um we're adding and also all that's already here. I think there there are two things that maybe I would want to call out that, again, I think are already embedded. But I like, I would love to see them explicitly. One would be, um and I think this maybe would belong in welcoming and listening to the community as partners, um but adding in welcoming and listening to students as partners. I, you know, my my career has historically been working with young folks and they're so smart and so wonderful. And I I I'd really like to see that called out. Um and the other thing that I think um would be useful to just call out explicitly um is working district wide to build um and implement trauma informed practices and create trauma responsive environments. Um I think it'd be useful to just call those things out as well.
Laurel, was your hand raised?
Yes, and it this kind of goes along with what Martina just said. I appreciate the trauma informed practices and the responsive environment in that um we have removed SROs from schools. Um but there seems to be even just having someone that really understands that, you know, the the what de escalation and all these things and how they can be embedded and and incorporate. I'm not sure how you will say this, but I'll depend on you guys to fix my my wordiness. Um but really paramount, because right now it seems like every time the topic comes up, it's really around not, we shouldn't be focusing too much on cer- what certain kids look like. You know, because we've been getting in trouble for that. So we can't do that. Um but there's, I don't see a whole broad program or knowledge base. And so somebody who really knows that's part of their responsibility is to um protect staff, protect students, protect, you know, um school property, all these things and make that kind of at the I don't want to say the forefront because all of these are so important. But one of the high level responsibilities, I mean, we're dealing this week with a lot of you know, social media um posts that are really harmful. And so we're hearing about this, but there's not a ton of much that we're hearing other than police were called. And we don't, there's nothing else. So I think there's can be more. And if somebody who knows about those been dealt with it, it'd be wonderful in trauma informed. That's why I wanted to put it with what Martina said, because it's very important that it's done in a way that, you know, we understand what the students are are going through or where they came from to be behaving in such a way.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to the next slide.
All right, and then as we start to um narrow into the competencies for the role, here are really high level themes that I heard around the how this person does the work. Um one, being a fierce advocate for equity, anti racism and inclusion. Two, being an innovative, inspiring and demonstrated educational leader or having that leadership experience. Um three, being an authentic relationship builder and courageous communicator. And four, having the ability to manage complex organizations and systems. And so what you will see in our job descriptions is that there will be, you know, some number of competency headings. And within those headings, there will be probably three or four bullets that sort of describe what those competencies mean. Um you've heard from Kathleen, she is our content creator. And sometimes we have to give her a word limit because she takes what she's heard and she creates very eloquent descriptions of what these competencies mean and how we want candidates to demonstrate their ability to meet them. So this is like the beginnings of a high level theme area for the competency. And in the description, you tend to see a lot more language that explains what that looks like and feels like.
And this is really important, you know, to start with the headlines. Because if this was all your candidates saw, would this really be clear enough about what the, what the board and what the 4J community is looking for, caring about in terms of their next leader? And once we have the competencies clear, we want to make sure the entire board is aligned behind those competencies. Because every step of the process is going to be driven to measure these skills and these competencies and nothing else. So no other criteria that might be in the back of someone else's mind, but hasn't been set explicitly yet. We want to be as clear as we can be about the skills we want to make sure the next leader will have. And they usually are four to five in the end that we focus on. Saw a hand go up. Judy?
It was just me. I just wanted to say this slide is really clear to me. I like the start for the the big, bold competencies. And then if I'm understanding correctly, a lot of the things we've identified sort of fit in clear bullets under these further defining them.
That's right.
These are well, I think, really are well articulated.
Thank you. Gordon?
I guess it occurs to me that these things function both kind of as a advertisement to potential candidates to tell them what we're looking for and for us internally in terms of our agreement or internal process. And as the, as telling candidates what we might be looking for, they seem great as telling us like what, you know, how we'll know if somebody has what we want. It feels like where the rubber meets the road is in the next stage. Like, I feel like, oh, everybody would agree to this. But but we might not all agree among ourselves what the things are that define those. And I, I know when I, you know, when I spoke with Sylvia, you know, the things I'm looking for, and I'm not saying this because I think everybody agrees, it was like a demonstrated track record of building a collaborative relationship with staff, including staff unions, or like a demonstrated track record in creating and implementing an equity lens. And so I guess I want to make sure, I don't know that we have to do that tonight, but I want to make sure that we, as a board, get to that stage. Because it feels like that's the point that we really need to come to agreement in order to have a way to move forward in our internal process.
That's exactly right. Was there another hand? That's exactly right, Gordon. And I think when you see the draft job description and the next slide sort of begins to allude to this. But we'll start to talk about like, what's the priority of some of these? Are we even showing them in the order of priority for you as a board? Is something more important than the other thing? Where does it sit? And we'll also categorize the responsibilities in theme areas as well. So it won't be a laundry list like you saw on the previous slide. We'll really try to categorize the responsibilities into themes. And then there'll be subbullets beneath those themes as well. And we'll ask you to say, you know, to say, to tell us what's missing, what resonates? Are they in the right order of priority in your mind? And then everything else will be built from there.
Great, thank you.
So definitely want to just give you another moment to say what, what resonates, what's missing? If there's an order of importance, what might that be? Because when candidates read it, they will read it in that way as well.
I added in the chat, because it's a lot of words, emotional intelligence competency, which has, you know, some of the bullet points that everybody knows is self-awareness, self-regulation, motivation, empathy, and social skill. It's so amazing how often at high-level searches, that is just not part of the core of what people are searching for. And I think it's just paramount, because along with that, you get a lot of the other things we've been talking about already.
Thank you, I love that. And and we love to always include some questions that include some self-awareness and self-reflection so that we can hear how how candidates reflect on their learnings and their career trajectories and what's worked well, where they failed, where they've been successful. So thank you for that.
Maya?
Are you on mute?
You're muted, Maya, sorry.
It's okay, I put my hand down at least. So it sounds like we've made it really clear as a collective body that equity work and anti-racist work is really important to us. One of the things that's really crucial, I think, in that arena is to recognize that there needs to be an acknowledge that acknowledgement that, and I'm not sure how to word this, this is on and you, Kathleen, I'm looking at you, to 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 recognize that in that, in that work, there's a lot of room and a need for folks to be willing to be vulnerable and make mistakes. And that in making those mistakes, it's really dire that the reaction to being called in in response to the mistake is not one that comes from a place of shame or self-defensiveness, because that then impacts what I would say is the top of the priority list, which is someone who is really good at building and sustaining relationships. So yeah.
I like the sustaining part of that.
I think Alicia's hands up.
Thanks, Judy. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. Thank you, I wasn't sure. Sitting outside because I'm worried about the wifi. So I apologize for the noise. I appreciate that you had said, and help me if I misunderstood, that these are in order of our importance, blue, green, rust, purple? Is that?
They're not yet. We're asking you to tell us, are they in the right priority?
So we are seven of us. And we have agreed on a few things, like we have really long meetings. But I'm not sure you're going to get agreement on that. And if so, I just wondered how you would, are we going to vote on that? I mean, I guess I kind of see them as they're there. You know, you could alphabetize them for me. And or leave them just like they are, because, you know, it's a nice balance with As and Is. But if we are going to do it, I'm just curious how you would propose we, as a board, would make that, make that choice. Thanks.
What do you think, Sylvia?
We would make a horizontal job description that's like, just like a long flag. We'd see if we can post it.
I mean, typically, the competencies are all generally equally important. You know, there, there are few of them. We measure them all. And, you know, as we get through it, some feel more like non-negotiables than others. You know, and so we can feel our way through that. We don't have to agree on the order of importance. But we do want to know if some people feel strongly about some of these versus others before we get started. And so that was more the purpose of the question. I see Mary and then Judy. I did see Gordon's hand up earlier. Saw flash there, I don't know, Gordon.
Yeah, I don't need to.
Okay, all right. Mary and then Judy?
Yeah, I mean, I think the competencies, how is, they're very broad. And I like the four you've got there. And I don't know that any one is more important than the other. You know, if you can't manage a complex system, how can you, you know, be innovative and demonstrate leadership education? I just think they're, they're good the way they are. I wouldn't try in any way to prioritize them or vote. I just think that's a morass of different opinions. And we're just trying to just talk about the competencies and not say this is the number one competency. Because I think it depends on the candidates, it depends on the interviews. And, you know, not everybody's going to be a perfect 10 on all these things. So I just don't think it's important to do that at this point. I like the general descriptions. And then when we interview people, we can figure out what that person might need or not need. So I, I would not advocate trying to rank these. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary. Judy? You're muted.
Doing my hands like Maya. So I wouldn't, I would agree, I wouldn't advocate, I think these are all important. And as, you know, and the ideal would be to get someone that has the total package, for sure. And I just, so I, that was my, going to be my original comment. But so in, I really liked the two comments, one from Laurel, one from Maya, about the social, the emotional intelligence and then the, you know, the, you know, knowing that people would make mistakes, just that vulnerability. I'm, I'm going to guess those would be maybe potential kinds of bullets under authentic relationship building and courageous communicator, right? These would be, we're, we're starting to understand and define those. Okay, I just wanted to be sure I was on the same wavelength there, so, great.
I agree, Judy, I was thinking the same thing, as a matter of fact.
And so this is obviously just a first pass. We will continue to take what, what we've heard so far. We'll review all of our notes in much more detail than the last six hours and begin to flesh out the draft job description with the subbullets beneath beneath our learnings. So thank you so much for your feedback.
And I'm going to hand it over to Kathleen in a moment because it is really important to note that this really is the very beginning and that this is a dynamic process. So Kathleen, talk us through community engagement.
Yep, I'm, I'm happy to do that. And it was really just informative and enriching to hear people's feedback on the, the early competencies and strengths that emerged based on your, on your, your conversations with Sylvia. So the goal from the community input is certainly to, to make sure that we've got the role description right. And as I mentioned, when, when I was speaking before, the job description is so important because that's the narrative where candidates see themselves reflected in the role. And so the competencies there will be a way for them to gauge their readiness for the role and their ability to, to be present in the interview process for it. That is also how we are actively engaging candidates, not only in our sphere, but those that express their interest in the role. And then also how we screen candidates in a truly equitable way based on the, the evidence of their, of their demonstration of these competencies. And so something that we share with stakeholders throughout the processes, we're engaging them because clearly, we're going to have a job description posted by December 17th. They're in that neighborhood. We know that we're not going to get all stakeholder feedback by that time. What we share with stakeholders as they're providing input is every single question, every, you know, idea, every inspiration, every thought helps us to form the interview experience for candidates. And we want that to be evident to people as they're participating in the process down the road. But that's a commitment that we make for sure. And then we want to make sure that as we, in the spirit of, I mean, radical transparency and radical candor, that we get the board's feedback as we're creating all of these processes, you know, the, the interview guides, the performance tasks, all of the candidate engagements throughout the process. And so at each step of that, you'll notice that we have a very frank conversation about bias along the way. And we want to make sure that we are, again, creating conditions for people to speak vulnerably about that. You know, with candidates, it came through in the competencies that you initially manifested, that we are, we, almost, we are human resources people. We put humanity at the heart of everything we do. And that begins, you know, that begins with stakeholders and begins with candidates. And so we want to make sure that we're keeping it real with people at every stage of the process. So it's students, it's parents, it's staff, it's district leaders, it's people who are going to be impacted by the superintendent's leadership. And in all honesty, that's everyone in 4J. That's everyone in the community. So we want to make sure that people have the opportunity to provide input there. So as Monica mentioned, it's late in the game right now. But we will find ways to seek that input throughout the month of December. And definitely January will be hot and heavy month for us to engage with stakeholders and get feedback. That can happen in all kinds of ways. Again, as I mentioned, working with students is a specialty that we have. And we've been honored in multiple districts to get just the most compelling feedback from students. And honestly, the most, I don't know, just the, the saltiest feedback from kids about what they're experiencing from the superintendent. And then we care about access to providing feedback. So we want to make sure that translators and interpreters are available whenever possible in the various contexts that are available for, for families to provide input. Community, you know, this is business partners, this is corporate sponsors, this is people who employ students of the district who engage in internships with students in the district. So anybody who's got input in that regard, clearly principals, principal supervisors, anyone who is directly impacted by superintendent's decisions, the, the unions, you know, we've worked with districts that have up to 11 bargaining units. So we are no stranger to that. And each of us has worked in those kinds of districts as well, where those voices are incredibly pertinent. And then, you know, we care about central office staff and, and other leaders at the district. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we want to, we want to hear from the voices that are not often asked for their input. And so that is sometimes the facilities managers, the nutrition service support providers and others, the paraprofessionals, people who provide the most integral, transportation providers, people who provide the most integral support to students every day. We want to hear from everyone. So we are really committed to providing opportunities for everyone at those levels to provide feedback. So there are multiple ways that people will have the opportunity to participate. And I know the question came up earlier about what is remote, what is live? We'll follow your lead in that regard. It's been different in different districts that we've supported based on their community context and based on what makes sense for them. As Monica mentioned, many districts have kept these gatherings virtual. At this point in time, there's a way to do them in a hybrid fashion where it can be both in-person and virtual. But we want to make sure that we have enough community gatherings where people are able to first and foremost, access the dates, understand when they're able to participate. first and foremost, access the dates, understand when they're able to participate and then show up there. We want to make sure that with identified groups with the board's input, that we've got interview and focus groups with key stakeholder stakeholder panels. And then, you know, something that's proven to be quite fruitful for us in previous searches is just the online survey. So making sure that stakeholders have the option to provide their input, their thoughts about questions. Their, you know, they're they're thinking about what the interview process should look like in survey that they can submit anonymously and submit online. So we we think of that as a way to provide equitable access to just participating in the interview experience for the superintendent interview process. So I think that as Monica mentioned at the top of the call, we want to find out if there before the end of this, it would be ideal, and I'm keeping an eye on time. We've got hopefully enough time left to make this happen. If we could identify some dates for community engagement and then think with you about what the communications rev- she would be to just to amplify people's willingness and and desire to to provide input. And we would love to hear more from your perspective about what work, what has worked best in the past. And then we want to make sure that people in 4J really understand that this process is happening. We make no assumptions about that. We want to make sure that we are broadcasting that this process is happening, that people are invited to participate and that we are depending on their support in the process. So I'm thinking about social media or other ways that we can get the word out there. We want to hear about that. So yeah, I will, I will end with just share your ideas with us about what makes sense in this regard.
Yeah. So the first big question is, when do you think we could target events that would give us enough time for the district to communicate, advertise, get the word out and for people to make plans to be there? Laurel and then Gordon?
And Mary? Yeah, so during the interviews, you talked about how hard, how hard you work to make sure everybody's voice is included in the in the community engagement. I'm wondering with just two dates for like, I guess, it's community engagement or how I forget how you talked about it, community gatherings. I I I just wonder how there'll be time to to do the process where you figure out whose voice is not heard and also work to get them to be part of this. And I was wondering if you could speak more about that.
Yeah, and that's why that that's why it's such a top priority for us to pick a date and then get moving on that as quickly as possible. And that's also why we don't think we could reasonably start maybe even until mid-January, but at least start getting the dates out there. Judy had shared with us an initial starting list of community groups. And so Judy, and I wonder if you want to share a little bit more about that. And but you know, our first step, just to answer your question, Laurel, is to, you know, to really work with the board, with district staff to identify who those groups are and then what the best channels are for reaching them, for getting the word out to them about these events. And so if, you know, what we found is if we have at least a month sort of a runway, that we can start to kind of set the date down and then move immediately to advertise and get out, reach out to those different groups of people. Gordon?
Thanks. There's so there's a couple of things that I'm skeptical about. And then a couple of things that I that I'd like to hear more about. And I and I'd say this with a grain of salt, that I was enthusiastic about contracting with your organization because it seemed like you did some things that were new that other people don't do. So maybe the things I'm skeptical skeptical about, you actually have a new way of doing. In my experience, the open community meetings and the general like open to the public survey have been the least useful things I've seen because everybody wants everything. And even if you have 100 people turn out to a meeting in a community of whatever we are, 170,000, it's not necessarily represent, it's not representative. And you know, it's kind of like, all right, you have to do it because we're not going to say, we don't want to hear from people. But it's not, it I haven't seen it be a source of really useful input. And and then on the flip side, I, some of the organizations on Judy's list, I thought were really good. One of the things I wanted to hear more about maybe is the is how you do focus groups because part of what I'm thinking is, is that there are some some chunks of the community that are organized enough that you can go to an organization and talk to people who, you know, either formally or informally actually represent a big chunk of people. I think that's true of unions, it's true of some community groups, it might be true of PTOs, it's probably true of some student organizations. And then there are big chunks of the community that are not organized. And I'm thinking of like parents with stu- parents of students with special needs, poor and working class families, families that have an undocumented family member. Like there's not an organization for these people and they tend to not show up to things. But I wonder if if there is a way, but we don't want to just get anecdotal, like one person's story either. And so I'm curious in your experience, if you've had experience running focus groups for those kind of segments of the community that end up getting useful input that's not an anecdote, but also not a comprehensive survey. Or how you think about going at those that I think are really important segments to hear from, but there's not an organization to go to, to to interview.
So Kathleen, did you want to answer that? I I'm happy to as well.
That was, yeah, that's a, that's a really big question. We we appreciate that. We want to make sure that with the stakeholders that we're supporting in a community that we have as many opportunities as possible for them to contribute and participate. And and I I definitely appreciate the the reality of your experience using the the surveys and the gatherings. I'm not sure that that's the experience that we've had with with either of those. So I, and Monica, I would love your, I would love your backup here, but you know, we have truly, truly depended on the the intense feedback that we've gathered at these stakeholder groups that we've facilitated. And you know, the the purpose of the surveys is that we want stakeholders to see their questions represented throughout the processes. And this is where the virtual setting has actually been a boon to these processes. Because people who have submitted questions, submitted feedback, have actually been able to see their language represented in the way that we've, the the way that we've approached the the stakeholder input sessions. You know, the other, the other thing is, this is a little bit, a little bit tougher, I guess. But we have taken the input that we've gotten from both the community gatherings and the staff and the community surveys to really frame the the interview processes that people don't get to see. So anyway, I I'm I'm really, really thoughtful and grateful for and about your your feedback about these two channels. That just actually hasn't been our experience in using, in using these when we have been very intentional and purposeful about the invitation for people to contribute and to participate.
Yeah. So you know, there are a few important things here. One is working with your communications team and working with your community leaders to find the ways to get the word out to people that might not normally show up. Sometimes districts already have channels for communicating with all parents, like texting, like robo calls, we'll take it, that can help. Making sure that we announce sometimes community gatherings that are monolingual in the, in the family's first language, that's not English. Creating environments that are as welcoming as possible, working with the schools, with principals to identify those parents that you're that you're mentioning. It takes a little bit of time and effort to get people out to the meetings. But step number one is making sure people know about it. Sometimes we have to go where they are as opposed to having them come to us. So if there are groups that meet, you know, religious leaders have been very helpful partners. You know, there are sort of local aid agencies that might be willing to partner with the district. You know, to get into the spaces where those audiences might be. So I think there are a lot of options and you know, we would start with with the community leaders that you already know are actively involved and supporting to get their ideas, to see what we can do. Now, the thing with the community gatherings is we don't do like a town hall style thing where there are 100 people in the room and the person with the mic gets to speak. We, in every single one of these settings, we really try to get to small group conversations that are intimate, that are safe, that are confidential, where people can tell us their stories. And we, we, yes, you know, on the surface looks like what other people do, but in reality, I think what, you know, Kathleen is referencing is that people will open up and because they're not talking in front of 100 people, tell us what they actually experienced with their child, with their school, with the district and why it matters to them. And that's the information that we're able to then kind of look across all of our conversations and say, these are the things that your community is saying is really important. Or these are the things that you know, you have a, you're you're hearing a lot, but actually when in in total, right, is not representing everybody. And so we want to lift up all of the voices and give you a balanced point of view. So we work with you to identify the people that we should meet with. That's really important. You know your community best. And then we work, ideally, we would reach out to community partners and others to ask for their ideas on how best to engage, you know, the broader community in these conversations.
Thanks. And can you say a word about how you do the focus group meetings, like as opposed to the big community group meetings or the interviews?
Yeah, the focus groups are very similar in format to what happens once we go into smaller groups in the community gatherings. And so we will craft with you a set of questions, guided questions for discussion with community in the hopes of opening up, just really understanding their experience from their specific vantage point, their specific role. We tend to ask the same questions to every group. The only time it tends to be a little different is with students. But we're really trying to understand from people what their hopes and aspirations are for the school system, where they hope the school 4J will go from here. What they see as the shining strengths that need to be protected, just as as we ask you all. And what they really see as the big opportunities, and that is coming from their lived experience. So we try to get away from like, okay, you've got a group of people that came with their bullet points, right? But like, how has this actually played out in your personal life? And why does it matter to you personally that this is addressed? What's possible for students if these issues are addressed? Those are the kinds of conversations that we're trying to listen.
Thanks.
Judy?
I just, I had just somewhat of a logistics question. So I was going to clarify, I understood that you had big community gatherings with really small focus group breakouts. And so my question is, do you, is your recommendation for board members to not attend those community forums and and interview sessions or to be there? It could change the dynamic, but it also might add to, I know people want to hear. So what's your recommendation experience with that?
We've seen this both ways. We've seen it where board members attended and it affected participation. And we've seen it where board members attended and it and it was really valued by the audience. And so I think it's going to be unique to 4J's context. I think we need to think about it. And if you do attend, we recommend one to two you know, maximum in a particular gathering or meeting. And then some opportunity to introduce yourself, say why you're there. And at the end of the meeting, to be able to share back what what you're learning as a board member because you participated. But we have done it both ways, where board members did not attend and also where board members did attend. So that's something for us to decide. I see Mary and then Maya and then Alicia.
Yeah, my questions are similar logistical questions and sort of similar to Gordon's. I guess I'm a little bit skeptical about being able to do this, you know, by next Friday. And I I'm not necessarily, necessarily, not necessarily the job description, but getting these community meetings laid nailed down because it sounds like you're going to be leaning fairly heavily on staff, both school staff to get the word out and staff, central district, central staff. And you know, how the holiday breaks, the winter break starts the 17th. And so I just, I don't know how you're gonna get that that word out and not, I don't expect people to work over the break, you know. Our staff has been working 24/7 and we've been trying to figure out ways for everybody to get some relief. So I'm just, I don't, I'm sort of concerned about that. And then Gordon had asked a question about selecting people for the focus group. So I I had that concern too. And then I was wondering about the time of day you're gonna have these meetings, you know, it's it's a, if you want families, evenings are difficult, but people work and you know, how do you do that? Or are we thinking about a weekend? And then again, we get into the holiday and I I just know in this town, people disappear, you know, and they're hard to get a hold of and people just kind of shut down. So I just, I I hope we can pull it off. I just think, you know, you said you need a month. So but but my 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 primary concern is, I I don't, I know that we, there was some conversation about what staff gonna do, our staff, what are you gonna do? I guess that's my primary concern.
Okay, yeah. So we don't think we can do really any of these before winter break. I think we have to plan for them and to take the time to get the word out and choose dates in January where we think we have enough time to to, you know, be respectful of people's time so they can make plans to participate. So these would have to probably begin sometime around the second or third week of January is my best guess, but that's what, that's what we want to talk to you all about. Typically, the district's role is to communicate, to lead the communications and the advertising for these events. So if there is a communication staff, we would work with them to, you know, make sure that the word is getting out there. And you know, you know, the the district knows who the community members are. And so we do, we do rely on the district staff to be the primary kind of using the district's channels to communicate with people about these events.
You know, just my, I'm I'm one more point. Cause you talked about, you know, working with schools to get the word out to parents. Because that's the, that's the primary link. But I just, I'm really reluctant to put more on our school staff. I volunteer three times a week to help hand out lunches because the school doesn't, they lost their nutrition staff. And so I just, I really don't want to add more to their plate. At a very busy time of the year, anyway. You know, people are trying to get ready for the holidays right now. And then they come back and it's after the holidays, it's trimester break and so forth. I just want to protect our staff as much as possible all across the board. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Again, it's really for the board to discuss and to see where and how, you you know, and that's what, you know, I know our our time is running short, but that's, that's the input that we're wanting to get from each of you is who you want to But that's, that's the input that we're wanting to get from each of you is who you want to engage and how you want to engage them. So that we can kind of move forward with that. Maya?
Okay, so I'm going to try to be organized in my thoughts because I have a lot of things that I want to say. And I, I, I'm going to start responding to Gordon because I also wrote, um. Just noted the breakout groups and survey, and, and I think that you have great room for being really successful with these things. Knowing the feedback of why they in the past haven't been the most successful experiences. And I, and I feel like the one was the biggest kind of red light thing or whatever, red, whatever. Is the survey and, and, and we get a lot of surveys in 4J, like a lot. And, and it's become a little bit a source of, of. I'm not sure what other word to use than system, and I think that you already nailed it when you said that your approach to using those surveys is for. To ensure that the language that is shared and the, and the, the information that is shared is something that people can have access to seeing. And I think that that is one of the clenchers in terms of making surveys successful is people seeing that they didn't just go through something and that their input didn't matter. So that reassured me. In terms of the focus groups, it feels as though there might be a lot of room for some overlap. And based on our connections in the community and, and the concern over staff. Time and energy, it feels like that's something that, that board members could take on, in particular, the folks who volunteer on the, on the committee that is going to be working on this. And it, and there's, there's places where it can overlap in terms of like, you know, the Spanish speaking families. Then we also have an immigrant community group and we also have a migrant ed program. And, and those could be meetings that happen at the same time, it seems, in order to mitigate that concern. And also to mitigate the concern of school. Or, or just district staff labor. I, I want to remind us that a lot of the school-based communication that does go out to parents is very much in the hands of PTOs. And this is the kind of thing that I, I think that PTOs could alleviate a lot of the concern as well as supplying emails. We, we often get emails from the district that the principals didn't necessarily write themselves. They're just passing them along to their school distribution list. So if we're not asking our principals to sit down and write out an email, it feels, it feels like a, a doable task to, to ask them to send along an email. Because they do it on a pretty regular basis. But again, relying on the PTOs, not only to give feedback, but also to make sure that they're getting their parent groups notified of these things. So it feels like, like it is very daunting. We have a lot of, or there's going to be a lot of meetings coming up. But I think that if we find ways to creatively support the scheduling and the communications of it. I, I think that, I think it's doable. I think people are really excited about this. People have been tuned into this. And, and for those who don't typically attend these types of events, I think. Honestly, I think as leaders in the district, it's on us to really work to make sure that we. We take advantage of every connection and, and avenue that we can tap into, to make sure that word is reached. And, and so my final thing is in terms of the list that Judy generated, which is incredibly thorough. There's a handful of folks that I would love to see added to it. Okay, and I'm seeing Judy give a thumbs up, so I don't know if I send that to Judy or if I send it to you all, but. And, and maybe it might be worthwhile for us to organize the list in, in clumps so that we could. We, you know, in terms of like the, the disabled community, there's a handful of different components that could probably be reached out to together. And, and again, like the migrant ed and the immigrant community at the same time, those sorts of things. Would it be worthwhile to expedite and to facilitate, help facilitate the process to, to clump them, for lack of a fancier word?
Yes, that would be extremely helpful. Absolutely. Thank you so much, Maya. And, and we'll have time, we'll be coordinating with Judy to make sure that we're getting feedback from everyone on the board. To make sure we're as comprehensive as we can be with those groups. I know we're nearly out of time, but we've got Alicia and Laurel and then Judy.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the primary activities that you've put up on here because that helps answer some of my questions. So my understanding is we're going to do these two big, y'all come and then break out into smaller groups for deeper input. You guys will facilitate those and then we're going to do. Facilit, interviews and focus groups and community partners, you talked about community leaders. And then we're going to do a survey. I am with Gordon on this survey and really want to know what's going to be unique. We may think it's unique. We may think all of those things that Maya said, how do we get people to do that, that? And I'm frustrated if you think, or it's just now going to be given back to staff. Our, our staff and then, and then when it doesn't work, we get to say, well, they didn't do a good job. That's kind of why we hired you guys. So now, you know, that's, that's my frustration on that we're going to fail on that community survey. You talked about hearing voices that aren't heard. But it looks like you're leaving that up to this board to determine how we're going to hear those voices. And you'll hear them if we bring them to the table. You'll set the table, but you're looking at us to bring them to the table. And, and the good news is we have a board that is pretty well connected. The bad news is we don't know who we don't know. We don't know who we're leaving out. So we kind of, you know, I was kind of looking at you that you would have some understanding of how you would assess a community where you would look not just, hey, who do y'all know? So I, I, that's going to be a challenge for us as a board because we know a lot of people, but we also don't know and we're going to leave them out. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned. I'm, I think it's great to say we want to hear all voices, but I'm missing how we're going to do that. This isn't looking at staff, we're looking at our, our well-broad, limited view. Thanks.
Yeah, and as I mentioned earlier, you know, I do think your community groups are going to be a great source of information for us as well. And, you know, we do trust the board to, as elected officials elected by the communities in 4J. To have a sense of what the primary audiences are that need to be reached and the audiences that aren't always reached. So the board does tend to be the expert at who those are. And then there usually is a communication staff that's accountable for getting the word out there. And knows how to reach the people in the local community better than Alma will. So I don't want you to take away from this that this is, we're putting it in your hands to solve. This is a partnership. There's knowledge you have and there's knowledge that we have. We have to work together and we have to reach out. To, to the people that are more closely connected to communities if you feel you're not closely connected to them. So it is a bit of a process that we'll have to go through to make sure that we get all the right. All the right people together and we do that.
I appreciate, appreciate you talking about it being a process because I would hope you never just look to an elected official board. And say that they would have the connection to all communities. As a person with a disability, as a lesbian, I can tell you, I don't see myself reflected on a whole bunch of elected official boards. So I appreciate you talking about a process that we'll go through to make sure we didn't leave communities out. And that it's not just left up to us to determine whether we left communities out. Thanks.
All right, we've got Laurel and Judy. I see Mary's also raised, raised her hand. Go ahead, Laurel.
Hi, I was, I was going to add my voice to what I understood from what you were saying is that. Staff who, I mean, there are laws around who can, who can know who are the people who go to our schools are. And we're the ones that hold those, that information. So we're the ones that have to put the information out. I think it may be helpful for people to know that you are writing the information, putting it together, making it pretty for people, what it's going to be. And it's not left to staff. What is left to staff to do is to get it out there because by law, we're the gatekeepers of that information. And we cannot give you a list of all of our people in our district because it's illegal. So it's really important that people understand that and that. Also, we're picking a superintendent. I think it's kind of dismaying that some people are like, we, we shouldn't have to do anything to help with this. Of course, we're going to be helping with this. Of course, we're part of this. You know, there's going to be some extra work involved in this. And so I just want to. People should be prepared for that and it shouldn't be constant gatekeeping unless you actually see something that is just. A bunch of work coming our way. I mean, we can't base all our, all of our choices on the fear of something that may happen. We chose you because we, I, well, I, my choice, I should not ever speak for anybody else. It is because I appreciated the way you talked about doing the work and you are actually much clearer about steps and ways that you had learned to do things. In more productive and more engaging ways. So I just want to add that to what we're talking about right now. Because I don't want it to be left with just people's fears. Thanks.
Thanks, Laurel. Judy?
We have Mary go because I think I would go last. It's really just about dates. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, I can't, I just wanted to. To, to Alicia's point, because, you know, one of the things that we frequently get criticized for as a board and as a district. Even in this meeting tonight, about an hour and a half ago, was communication. So I, I just, you know, I, I want to make sure that it's clear. Yes, we have to send it out because that's where people expect to receive the information. And I wouldn't advocate you be given a list in any way, shape or form. But I just, if, if people are upset with the survey or, or we do have the ability to text and email our parents, we can do that. That if it isn't what we think it's going to be, that, you know, it doesn't come back and all the district failed again, it's, it's, you know, we're working with you. We hired a consulting firm because we wanted your expertise in this process. And I know there's going to be extra work. We're going to have to have a lot more meetings. We're going to have to interview. I, I don't mind the work. I just am concerned and about adding more to staff's plate, especially this time of the year. And we just, two weeks ago, you know, decided to give staff some more time off to get caught up. And so that's my concern about kind of protect, trying to protect staff time and I will be quiet for the evening. Thanks.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll work with Judy to figure out who are the appropriate staff for us to speak with. And the first thing we have to do is have a conversation, talk about what they know, how they can support, what their perspective is on it. And then we'll, we'll take it from there one step at a time.
So just a couple of things. One is dates. And as I looked at the calendar while we were talking, I would just suggest we target that week of the 24th of January, which gives us three weeks when we get back. And if we could set several dates that we could put on our website, so at least people say, hold these dates or times. So I, and, and I, again, I think at least one of them needs to be on a weekend. So that would be the one before or the one after. And then in evening, and maybe we're looking at three that week. So we could at least put out those dates, you know, think about these community forums coming and that gives us time to, to make a communication plan. And we have three weeks when we get back after break to start getting the word out. Does that sound reasonable? It also avoids MLK weekend and is before President's Day weekend. So what are people's thoughts about that? It's either that or the week after. Oh, Mary? I, yeah, I see.
We have a budget committee meeting at 6:00 PM on the 24th. And then I was holding the 26th in case we needed extra time for a mini retreat. But I don't know how much you want the board to be involved or if that's an important factor. Again, I would be concerned about staff and the ability to prep for those multiple meetings. But, but for me, it works.
Are you suggesting we push it out a week to the week of the 30th?
No, I know. I think the sooner the better, the sooner we can organize it. I just am concerned about, you know, the ability of staff to, to take on something else that week.
Do they, do they all need to be in the exact same week? Because that seems like a ripe chance to miss people.
It, it depends if there, if you're, if you, if the Alma team is going to be there in person. It helps to have it at the same time. We could come like, you know, kind of two weeks in a row or something like that. If it's virtual, there's a lot more flexibility around, around the timing for you.
And I think I'd like, my vote is to have a mixture, virtual and in person.
Gordon?
Yeah, I also, I think we'd want, if we can do in person, great. I think we'd want to at least have at least one online too. Because there are people who will come online who, who won't come in person. And in terms of the timing, I mean, I also would at least start in the week that you said, Judy, that week of the 24th. Because when, whether it's then or a week later, it's going to be a lot of work to make it happen. It feels like that's enough time past the New Year holiday that, that both we and everybody else can, will have three weeks to focus on driving turnout to whatever the event is.
Maya?
Yeah, I, okay, good on that. I, I. I mean, the, the person who is kind of anxious to get things going would love to see something at the end of the 17th week, maybe over the weekend. And then maybe I heard somebody mention three and, and I'm wondering if, if, if we are going to have you come out and do some in person, which I think would be honestly pretty wonderful. It might be interesting to have like one on like the, I don't know, the 20th and then one on the 22nd. If we feel like we can push that, if not, maybe then like the 24th, which is a Sunday, 23rd, and then the 24th, which is a Monday. Followed by one that is exclusively online for folks who are still not comfortable coming in person. So I know that's adding a third community gathering, but. I think that it, it would be worthwhile to consider, you know, taking advantage of a trip to double up very close together. Weekend and not weekend and maybe. Afternoon versus evening to acknowledge that Sunday is, Saturday and Sunday are both days when many people do have services that they go to. So maybe more afternoon, but not quite evening. I don't know. I, I just, I'm, I'm eager to get things rolling. And I, I also am committed to helping make sure that the word gets out so that we don't have to wait too long. Because this is already pushing back the timeline quite a bit and. I don't, I don't want to end up with April announcement date. I really hope that we can keep that March date as close as possible.
Mary?
Just, just a quick logistic reality. We are still under COVID restrictions as a public school district via the governor's orders. And we have limited space in the auditorium at, at the district office. So I don't know, on the community gatherings, the one that's in person, I don't know how you would limit that or where you'd find the space to be able to have the appropriate spacing. My understanding was the mask mandate in private spaces in, indoors is, is in effect until the end of February. And so just sort of where, where would you have this? I mean, it's just another layer of logistical things to consider. You know, you don't have that problem with a virtual meeting, but in person, and I think there are probably a lot of people, given the, the interest in this and the interest we have in our board meeting, they'll want to attend in person. So another monkey wrench to, to consider. Thanks.
So I have a, oh, go ahead. Maya, did you want to respond to that?
I was just going to say, it seems like some of our high school auditoriums could accommodate larger groups than our board meeting space.
And then we have to coordinate with the high schools. So that's the other logistical challenge.
So this is what I'd like to suggest. So a couple of things. One is I think we got a general idea that people would like to have some options, spread them out as far as we can, given Laurel's comment. But explore the options of what we could do in person, how many people. So there's just some things and we have to check the district's calendar and availability. So I was going to suggest, you know, we had talked about having a small group and I know we had had some volunteer, you know. Maya and Mary were willing to serve with me. Maybe the three of us could quickly get together and then make a proposal, send it out to the board, coordinate with, with district to look at the calendar and, you know, get this done in the next few days to Alma. That's, that I think just is maybe a realistic way to proceed. Does anyone have any objection to that? You'll all get to review it and give input, but we'll at least be able to get a proposal. Gordon?
I don't have any objection to that step going forward, but I just wasn't sure if you were saying that, that you, Mary and Maya would be kind of the board committee working on the search in general going forward, because I thought that was something we'd have more discussion on.
Good. So I'm just suggesting the three of us do that because people, they had volunteered to help and that for this task.
Just in this initial step.
Yes. And then we're going to, at our board meeting, talk about that and formalizing a committee and a plan and having a discussion and what the responsibilities would be of that. Okay? Yeah.
Yeah, and that typically helps us to go a whole lot faster, especially if whatever the subcommittee is, is able to report back to the rest of the board. And typically, we will meet with the full board probably every, you know, twice a month is usually a good cadence. So we can come back and see what's possible. We'll disc, we'll discuss that with Judy and Mary and Maya to see what makes the most sense. Excellent. Well, we have taken more of your time than we had scheduled for tonight. Just wondering if there are any final comments or questions from the group?
I'm going to, I'm going to just thank you. You did a, you really led us through a real big agenda and a lot of work. So I appreciate your organization and your leadership in this. So thank you. We look forward to moving this along and working together. So I wanted to say, this work session is officially closed.
Well.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, everyone. Take care.